Policy committee. Looks like we're going to discuss the policy from MASC August newsletter.
Yeah. And we were each going to take three.
Yep. And I'm trying to look and see.
It looks like the changes on most of them really had to do with.
It was, yeah, it was like one law.
After 2022, chapter 117.
Yeah, I don't even think that the MASC policy's actually changed. It's just the definition of some of the terms in there has changed based on the state.
It was just the addition of the definition of race to include traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, and protective hairstyles, and the correlating legal references to Acts of 2022, chapter 117. So, most of them look like that's the only change in them.
Well, so what I did for mine, and I'm happy to go through and do it with the other ones too, is what I did is I took, I had the middle ones, ACR, GBA, and GCF, which are non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation, equal employment opportunity, professional staff hiring. And I went through and I just added in the red. And it was actually very close to what the former one was.
Oh, you did the red? I was wondering.
Yeah, I put the red in there to show what the new policy was. And the old policy is in the, is still in the dark font. And then I noticed we didn't have file ACR. So I reached out to Kristi and said, is this because, you know, do we amend this one? And I forgot to hand it over to you. And she said, actually, no. We took that policy out, like another school committee policy, subcommittee, took it out because they did not feel, I think she said, they did not feel it applied? Or let me see.
Are those the ones that we just did with Russ?
I thought, it was funny, I was trying to find those in here to see if that was one of the ones that we did.
I think it was.
Well, there's AC, but there's no, in this ACABR and AC, but there's no ACR. Because I did the same thing, and then I went back and looked at one of our older ones. But, so this one's from, was this May 18th? Those are the ones I think we got from Russ. I mean, I kind of feel like this might not have applied before, but I feel like it's an important policy.
Trying to find it in here.
Because it, if you actually go to this policy newsletter.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I can't, let me look up what Kristi said. She may have said she, they felt that other policies covered it, and it was just kind of redundant.
Reading it, Russ's policies are exactly this.
Right, it seemed, I think she said it was like basically redundant.
Yeah.
Yeah, she said ACR is not in the policy manual because it is a regulation and not a policy. A few years back with Cliff and Susan, we deleted all the R, the slash R or the dash R and the dash E.
Right.
Documents from the policy manual because they were not in the purview of the committee. So that's actually, that's more, that makes much more sense because it's under our purview.
They took out the regulating, we still have them. So the Rs and the Es of the regulations and exhibits.
Yep.
So the regulations.
Oh, excuse me, no.
The regulations are just, those are like state regulations that are put in, or, you know, something from the state. The Es of the exhibits, those are something like we might put in, and they're more procedural.
Gotcha.
So it's not that they, it just confuses things.
Okay.
Those are probably things along the line that the superintendent put in there to match with the policy so we could go through and say, here's a school committee policy, here's the exhibit that we wrote to match that or to support it. So.
So then we should not, because this isn't really under our purview and it's not really policy, we shouldn't put this in here? Like, you guys have that, but does it need to be a policy?
You can just tell Kristi, she has another book for the regulations.
Okay, so have her put that in there. Okay.
So, because you may want to reference it at some point.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Because at the bottom of the policy, there's probably a regulation number. So you might say, oh, you know what, Kristi, where is that? Do you know where that is?
Yeah, yeah, like cross-reference.
Right.
Or the legal reference, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So then you can, you can then say, you have that. So, it's not that you can't have access to it, it just confuses your book. It makes it a little more.
Well, it makes it really thick, I mean, it's so, I feel like it's covered.
It just makes it complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, it's not that you can't have access to it. She has all those, just in a separate book. And she has a book with the exhibits too. So you can, if you need to cross-reference.
All right, I'll have her add that, that's really helpful, I appreciate that. So when it comes to like the new policy, so like for GBA, which is the equal opportunity, they added in, promoted without regard to their, and this is their language, race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, disability, age, genetic information, active military slash veteran status, marital status, familial status, pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition, homelessness, ancestry, ethnic background, national origin, or any other category protected by state or federal law. So I think we should just add that, that part in. It's basically, so if you look at the top part, and then you look at the bottom part here, this is what we have right now.
It's just redefining protected classes, right?
Right, that's exactly what, and then they have all the MASC and the links. And then at the bottom for this one though, it says, note, although it is not usually necessary to have a policy that simply restates existing law, in this case, it is important to reaffirm the school committee's commitment to equal opportunity and to remind the hiring authorities in the district that many considerations other than district educational goals are factors to be considered. This is also the category in which to include all affirmative action policy and plans, blah, blah. So I say, you know, we'll obviously get rid of the note. But I say we just adopt the new language.
Yeah, you just put it as.
Yeah.
So Mike, do you want me to go in and just change the language and then give this over to Kristi? Like, I'll do it, I can do it on all of them.
Do a first read for it, or?
That's a good idea, yeah.
You're going to keep that in for the read though, so they can see.
Yeah, so they can see it. That's a great idea, thank you.
You can keep the edits with the originals in for the read.
Yep, okay, put edits in.
So you could just do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean.
Just give them this piece so the school committee can see what's been added in.
I think that's really helpful too, because then you can actually see, because otherwise you're pulling up two.
Right.
You know, and that's what I did with ours, I pulled up one and pulled up the other one, and.
That's all these are.
Yeah.
Doesn't need a ton of, it's, the state redefined protected classes basically, so it's not like we can not do that.
Yeah. Okay.
Right.
That's the same thing for the three I had, Lori, JB, JFBB.
Yep.
Same thing, just add the reference to the new law into it.
Yep.
I did have a couple of questions on, so JFBBI, we don't have. It looks like the MASC, it's all, it's about school choice.
Yep.
It sounds like one is for, if a committee has a policy to do school choice, and one is a policy to not do school choice.
Oh.
So my question, I didn't understand, you could just simply have a policy that we don't do school cho, choice.
Oh, that's interesting. Let me see what I just put in the file. So many of those.
If that's the case, I think some people on the committee might be interested in taking a look at that.
So that might be a discussion for first read too. Would I just put that piece of paper?
You're talking about JFBBI?
Yes, yeah. They highlight, even the MASC, they highlight the word not.
Do you know what it is? It's on the one that looks like this.
It's on the newsletter? I have it right here if you want to take a look at it.
The August one, and then there's attached to it are the extra pages that explain what it is. I just seem to have put mine somewhere that I can't find.
It's right on top of your hand there.
No, this is the, this is the September one.
Oh.
I know, I was, it was funny, I'm like, maybe it's this one. Is it JFBBI?
Yeah, it's one of the last pages.
See what's in this file. Oh, yeah, JFBB.
So JFBB is pretty close to what ours says, except ours has a couple of additional things in there.
I'm going to step up for one second, the school nurse is calling me.
Okay.
Hello, Lori Hunt speaking.
Nope, it was the office regarding a check that I forgot to sign. For Rebecca's AP exams. All right, so I have it right here. Jake, you're right, it's in this file.
Yeah, so this JFBBI, that's a policy if we want to make it policy not to include it, but it still allows us to vote to include it if we want to. It just gives deadline when you have to do that. It's just basically the reverse of JFBB.
Oh, interesting.
Our JFBB policy though, has a line that I found interesting. Line three, or number three here, that resident students be given priority placement in any classes or programs within the district if you have school choice kids.
Oh, interesting.
Is that equity? I don't know.
That's a good point, I can understand why they.
Is that even?
Well, I can understand why they, why they wanted it, because, you know, you're probably thinking taxpayers, but at the same time, you're right, it is not equitable.
Is it even legal? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that it is.
Wouldn't sound so, based on these other policies we looked at about discrimination.
And that's JFBB?
Yes, in our man.
In our manual?
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to pass that on to Russ. That's a good point, good catch.
I mean, I understand, yes, like you said, they're prioritizing taxpayers and residents, and I agree with that.
Yeah.
If it's not legal, it's not legal.
Oh, I agree, yep. Yeah, no, I think that's a good catch, Mike. So how do JFBB and JFBBI differ? Because they look very similar.
They do look very similar. Like that's.
Yeah.
They're basically, one is just stating that this district accepts school choice as policy, and the other states that it does not accept by policy.
Okay.
Both of them give the ability to vote yes or no on slots and.
So do we adopt one or the other? Is that what it is?
Well, we have.
We have JFBB.
We have BB, not the BBI.
Yeah. I want to see how they.
Well, the reason, like, the reason you take a vote on that every year is it's because the way that law is written.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to find the actual thing here, but I know I've read it before, is that if you, if you, if you don't vote, it's, the assumption is that, that the school district does it.
Right.
It defaults to school choice, that you're doing it. So you have to have a vote to not have school choice.
Gotcha.
Like, you'd have to vote to not have it.
Now, so, just like, you just explained that the R stood for regulation. Would you know what the I stands for?
I don't know if it's an I or a one, I think it might be a one.
I've never seen an I, so, but I don't know.
I think it's a, I think it's a dash one.
But it's interesting, because they seem almost identical.
They are. It's just, one is a policy that you do it, and unless you vote.
Oh, I see, that's the difference, you did say that.
The other is, we're not even going to bother looking at the process unless we vote to decide we're going to do it that year. Is what it reads to me.
So when we, when we go for, I think you're right, when we go for a vote, would it be, or first read, would it be to determine which policy we want to adopt?
Well, no, what we're doing right now is just adding this updated discrimination language to it.
Yep.
But I just, I noticed, like, MASC gave us both of these, because these are both policies we can choose to adopt. It looks like in the past, they've chosen one over the other. And you would choose one over the other, because you wouldn't have both of these.
Right, because, yeah, because they're the same thing. So currently, we have JFBB.
I didn't realize it was an option to choose not to. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Gotcha, I see what you're saying.
Some people on the committee might want to choose that one, so it's a discussion that can be had.
So, when we do the first read, would you want to make a comment to explain the difference between the two?
I can, yeah, I can make a comment about it, just let them know that there is another option, and if they want to explore that.
Yeah, because when it comes time to vote, I feel like they're going to want to know, you know, that the difference between the two, because they'll read them, but you read them and they almost read the same unless they're side by side. JFBB versus JFBBI, okay.
So it sounds like Jeff, if, if a district had this other policy that says it's not policy to do it, then the principals wouldn't even go through their, they go through a process every year.
That's a new policy?
I don't know if it's a new policy or not.
It's just not one that we have, it's not our policy.
I haven't seen that before. It's my understanding of, I'm trying to find that.
I thought.
Which one is this, JFBB?
JFBB.
JFBB is the one we have.
So it's like right here, I'll wait, hold on, let me see this.
It's in this, this one right here?
Yeah, it's in this one, it's the last two. And it's also in this one at the very end, so it's very end, it's JFBB and JFBBI.
Yeah, I see it here, but where is it?
So right here.
Where is the full policy written?
JFBB and JFBI.
Oh, there it is, okay, I got it.
Yep. So they're, if you put them, even if you put them aside, they almost look.
The only difference is that first line.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, okay. No, this is new, this is August 2022.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he said that the big difference is the first line, or like the difference, yeah.
So what's new here is the default has always been that the district will admit, and then the vote is taken not to. So.
Gotcha.
If the policy is that you're not going to admit, then the, then, then the principals wouldn't go ahead and do that stuff.
Yeah, because that's, I imagine that's a process, right?
Yeah, but the problem is, if you decide to do that, then it's easy to just, since principals do that work anyway, it's just easy to have them go through and figure out what they, what they, what they would recommend. Because other than that, if you just decide on the spot, no, we're going to do it this year, they're going to have to go back now and redo all that work. I guess it's up to you, I mean, if you want to.
It's more, it's more of a philosophy of the district as to whether or not you even want to consider that, right? It seems like it's a choice whether we can consider it or not. We always have the right to vote not to admit any that particular year.
You could always, you could always not consider, that's, you could always, you just had to vote not to do it.
It's just an annual thing you got to keep on. And we get, you know, when do they do that? In the spring or something?
In the spring.
They do that, right?
Because usually, isn't that how, it's usually around budget time too, because that's how we figure out if we're, if that money's going to be in the budget.
Yes.
Because it's what, they get 5,000 per student they let in. It costs, what, 17,000 per kid in our budget?
Yeah.
So that's the, that was one of the questions that I brought up last year during the budget.
Yeah, because I remember we were thinking about discussing it more this year, given the increase in population.
So we have this one on file right now.
This is the one that we have, yeah.
Ah, okay.
And ours is a little different than that. It's basically that with a couple of things, I think, added.
What's the additions?
There, the one here that we were just talking about is line three in ours, it's not over there. I can't find it in this, but it basically, oh, it's in ours, sorry, that's why I'm looking in the wrong file. It says that resident students be given priority placement in any classes or programs within the district.
Which I was going to check with Russ to see.
You added that in.
I didn't.
No, not you personally.
No, the school.
The school committee.
Yeah.
I didn't even, because you're saying it, and I'm like, I didn't think you could do that.
It doesn't sound like you could do it.
No, no, that's, you know, I didn't, it's a good catch, because I didn't even see that in there. I didn't know, I've never known that to be the case.
Yeah.
Because the other thing is, when you accept a school choice kid.
Yeah, they're considered a student.
I mean, they have all the same rights and regulations.
Well, as they should, if they're accepted and considered a student, yeah. I mean, I am.
I mean, that's equity, Lori.
Well, I agree, and you know, if there's one thing we're for, it's equity.
Son of a gun.
Right? So I say, I'm not, I say we, I should highlight that.
I'm all over your equity this year, Jeff.
Certainly I am, Mike.
He's, yeah, he's our equity guy.
That's a good catch, I didn't even see that.
Yeah. All right, so I'll, I'll do what I'll do. I'll highlight that.
It's a regionalization.
Oh, that was prior, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So what I'll do is I'll highlight that.
That one makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you said you put that in nine, put that in.
No, not you.
No, I'm in the school committee, not you.
Looks like, yeah, 2018 it was done.
An equity-based person like you would never put something like that in.
No.
Never in a million years.
That's absolutely right.
He would say, this is inequitable. So it looks like for Bob's too, it's just the Acts, same thing. So what I'll do.
I think so, yeah.
So what I'll do for all of them is I'll go and do what I did for mine, because it was really easy to do, I just compared the two and put in the red. And that way, it'll be easy for people to review, and I'll get them in there, into the drive for our, you know, for our next, the next time we have a meeting for the first read. So that's good. Oh, good.
So that takes care of all of those two.
So we have school committee goals. They passed that, at the meeting, they, we passed it along to the.
Yeah, is there a document to look at for this, Lori?
So that's funny, because no, I didn't have, I didn't really have a document.
All right, all right, I just wanted to confirm I wasn't missing.
And so what I'm wondering, Mike, is if we make that kind of, I'm trying to find my, we make that an assignment, because I believe, I'm trying to find. You know, obviously, I think, I don't know if it's, I think communication, budget.
Communication was there, budget was there. We've kind of taken care of them by these new committees, new subcommittees.
Yes, I agree.
We've already taken care of some of them.
So, maybe what we should do is, for the budget one, I'm almost wondering if we should refer that to the budget subcommittee.
Yep.
So. And then for communication, is that something that we should cover?
Yeah, we can work on communication.
Should we bring ideas to our next meeting on what we might want to see in that goals? Or do you want to talk about it right now?
That's a good idea, well, you got anything on the top of your mind you want to talk about?
No, well, I think, like, I like the idea of, you know, being visible out in the community, you know, having like, you know, coffee chats or whatever, things like that, where we could, people could meet with us and talk to us one-on-one. We've done the Facebook piece, which is really good, I think that's been huge.
I see a lot of people sharing that.
Yeah, and then we've, you know, we've had our, we've had, we've been in the, in the newsletters as well, when we have updates that we want to share with the community, they put us in there. So I think that's, like, I think we're actually well on our way with that one. I don't, do you have any other ideas, or?
So.
I mean, I don't know how you feel about that idea either.
I like those ideas, let me just. So at our last meeting, we had a public comment from a constituent, and I would want to make sure that we addressed that, because.
I agree.
Part of that comment was around communication.
Yep.
Links to documents and such.
Yes, and that's item five.
I see another little item here, but kind of fits here too.
Yeah, let's, yeah, so let's, let's put it here, because it's item five, but we'll talk about it with item three, because you're right, it does fit.
Yeah.
So, in the drive, I had put in, I believe, an example of Shrewsbury and Northborough, and how they link their, how they link their, like, on one of them, you can go there and have the full PDF. Yeah.
So, this is something that, from the first day I was here on the committee, this is actually one of the things I agreed with Susan on. The communication in the reports and the drive and the organization and all that, it's, the time, is a timing issue mostly.
I agree.
You know? So I think the example that you gave here from that district, where they have a single document.
Yep.
With links to it, I guess the question is, when does that get released publicly? Is the question.
So I talked to the chair from Shrewsbury.
Yeah, because if we haven't debated on it, discussed it, then.
Right.
We don't want to be.
Yeah, putting in policy.
Tinge by anything that people might go spreading online, you know?
I, no, absolutely, I agree. I did talk to the chair of Shrewsbury about a few things last week, last Friday. And we discussed, I said to her, while I have you on the phone, can I ask you? I said, we, you know, we had someone stand up and they, they brought up an excellent point about how, you know, if we're going to talk about something that's going to be voted on, the community, if they want to speak to it, should be able to speak to it, but if they don't know about it, they don't. And so I said, you know, when we do first read, so when we do our first read on the policy, and then we go to vote on it the next time, it's already out there.
Yeah, that, the timing between those two meetings is the chance to.
Right, is to be able to do that. But sometimes we do, you know, a first read and a vote or things like that. But even so, like, if they're going to be, if there are reports or things like that, they might want to speak to that. So I said to her, how do you do it? And she said, we actually usually release them the next day. She said, it's just been the way we've done it, the community's been okay with it. Yeah, she said, it's a big PDF, it goes like onto our website, people can access it. She said, it's just the way we've done it. And she said, you bring up an interesting point. And then I had reached out to a few other people. And so it's, I mean, I guess it becomes a choice, it becomes a question of, who would do it, when would it be done? So like, who, when, and how? So what I noticed was, I was able to go directly to other schools' websites, school committee, and I, there were links there, there were, some just had agendas, some just had minutes, other ones had all, everything right there.
And if it's a single document, then it's easy to just post it on a website.
Right, and especially if it's in PDF form, then you don't have to get into the whole Gmail sharing, like, to drive, stuff like that.
So, first question, when?
Yep.
All right. Your point there, I think someone brought up at the meeting, if the document hasn't been brought up in a public meeting, it's not a public document.
Right.
So I don't want to go against any public meeting.
Excellent point.
Or records laws or anything like that. So the day after sounds fine to me.
Yep.
Or even the night of, you know?
Yep, I know Kristi has said that, you know, if, if people request, she'll release it right when the meeting starts so that they can.
Yeah.
Follow along, so.
So that sounds like we can make a, we can, we should probably, I don't know if it's a policy or a procedure or anything around this, but we should do something, some sort of guidelines, some written guidelines.
I agree, that's a good idea, guidelines. So, so when it comes to that, if you think about that, then, trying to think of what, what might be released, because it's always been, it's always for that reason, because, you know, the meeting hasn't occurred yet, it's not a public document yet. So, so when it comes to that, if you think about that, then, trying to think of what, what might be released, because it's always been, it's always for that reason, because, you know, the meeting hasn't occurred yet, it's not a public document yet. The hard part too is, and what concerns me, is let's say we release, you know, a policy. Although I guess it can work in either way. Let's say we release something and, you know, it starts a, a Facebook war and then we see it. Is that considered deliberation before we get to the floor? Is that considered parent input? What is that?
That's, that's the trick, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think if you read it, there's nothing you can do, but if you start commenting, that becomes an issue.
Yeah, so maybe that's where the policy would.
So we already know, do the best to stay out of commenting, right? We already know that.
Yeah.
So that's why I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna put them out there before we have a chance to.
Yeah.
Cause if it's on here for a first read, anybody has an opportunity to look at it before the meeting, ask questions at the meeting.
Yep. So should the first read?
At that point, you know, whatever the public has to say about it, they can say.
Well, so, but the, so the first read, if it's released at the time of the meeting. And we discuss it and, and all that, and then the next time we go to vote on it, would that be considered when they would do so? So it, it works that way where they would.
Well, if someone wanted to make a comment, then they could make it on that night that we're gonna vote.
That we're gonna vote on it.
Second time it's coming out.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So really, it's not like they, that they don't have a speak, a chance to speak to it. So I, that's maybe what it should be, that we should really try to do a first read followed by a vote to give the public ample time to be able to weigh in. I mean.
Typically, that's how it goes.
Typically, we do do that, yeah.
I think there's, occasionally, there's been one-off situations where we've had to do the first read and vote that same night because a regulation changed, a, a state policy changed or something, DC came out with an announcement or something like that.
Right, and then it's got to be updated.
It's, it's not, it doesn't make sense to wait two months before you can actually implement it.
Well, so I'm looking at our, our agenda, which has been posted for our next meeting, and like it says, you know, approve acceptance of the grants, approve, approve, oh, so first read, first read, first read. But, so approve acceptance of grants presented by Ms. Costello. It's a vote, there was no first read for that, but I don't think that would be.
But that's not.
It's free money, like.
It's not a policy or a document or anything. It's, you know, there's probably a deadline on that.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, so you know what I think I'll do is I'm gonna do more research on how other districts do it, just to see. But I agree, I think if we're doing a first read followed by a vote, we have that.
Yeah, so.
They have that information.
All right, so as far as when something gets released, it's, let's say the night of the meeting. All right, the night of the meeting that it appears on the agenda, if there's a document that goes along with it, that's when it gets released.
So you know, I'm wondering if, if what we should be doing is, when the meeting starts, if Christie could post that, or, or someone else. I know she's right now in charge of the website, to the website, so that people could go there.
There's ways to do it. You can, you can set it up in the afternoon and put a timeline on it.
Right, right.
Ways to do that.
But because I think that the, you know, if we can't get it to them before, at least they could have it at the start of the meeting and then they could follow along and know what we're talking about.
We, we could publish it through the official committee district.
Yep.
Facebook, and you can just publish it. Like someone, once it's done, you just add it and just publish it, or 6:45 PM that night, or whatever time happens to be. All right. My, it, it's more important, I think, that we figure out a better way to handle all this documentation.
I agree with you. I agree. Do you think it should be one big PDF?
Well, it's gonna have to be if we're gonna plan to release it.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's one thing. I think it should be, I think it should be, you know, an official document with a table of contents with links to each section so people can easily get it, the table of contents being the agenda.
That's a good idea.
And then you link to it, and so that, figuring out how to create that isn't an issue. The, the issue is, when are we gonna expect the documentation to be ready? Cause I've had this issue and Susan and I agreed on it a long time ago. Nothing ever got done about it though. Getting it at the close of business on Friday does not give the committee enough time to review it before a Tuesday meeting.
I'd be thrilled if we could get it by the close of business on Friday.
Well, that's, there you go, that's the thing, yeah, right?
Um, because what I'm, because, so right now, what I have Megan doing, I've, 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 as vice chair, I've asked her to be the keeper of the drive. So I said, by Friday at four o'clock, you know, as a, as a starting point, can you make sure that every item that's on this agenda is in the drive so that we have enough with families?
So I disagree with Friday period.
Yeah.
I would want it before that. If we're having a meeting on a Tuesday, I would prefer a week. I think that's probably not gonna be realistically.
Yeah.
But Wednesday or Thursday, maybe Thursday's probably more realistic.
Okay.
I mean, personally, if, you know, if I'm, if I'm presenting to my board at work, I'm not putting it in the night before.
Right.
You know, they're, they're getting a week or two weeks to look at the, you know, the material.
So what I'm wondering is, for, to keep, to, to, to kinda centralize it all, I'm wondering if what we can do is, if we were to say, we want it by Thursday, you know, five o'clock, and then Megan can create the PDF. So that we have a PDF in the drive of all of them, so that when it, when the meeting comes on Tuesday, that PDF can go right, can be timed to go right into the.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, it, it's not even a big a deal. I mean, you set this up once and then there it goes. You set up a template.
Yeah.
You know, your agenda template with pages, however many you need, they're already linked. You just pop the document right into it. There's a, I mean, Google Docs has an insert right thing there, right there, you know?
That's a good point.
It's just, you know, insert, combine documents, whatever you wanna do.
Okay. I like that, Mike. That's a good idea.
And then, yeah, so, so then it's one document, boom, PDF, publish, set up it to be published at, I don't know, we don't always start exactly on time, so.
Yeah.
20 minutes after the start time, 15 minutes after, whatever it is.
Yeah, I, well, and I think it would be nice to have it, what I liked about when I went to some of these websites and I was able to pull up their agenda followed by all the documents, was that I actually had a good idea, you know, because, you know, minutes are good, but when you can actually review the documents, I mean, it's really, was all right there. You don't have to go hunting things down. And even as a school committee member, it would be, it's, it's good to be able to go in there and see one document from that meeting instead of going into all the different folders.
Well, yeah, that's, you know, preparing for a meeting is one thing, but trying to go back and figure out, you know, what meeting did we talk about this idea?
I agree.
You know, you gotta.
I've done that several times.
You gotta go through every single folder, look at the agendas.
Yeah.
You know, so maybe through this, I don't know, we, every, every meeting we have, we add it to like a super agenda, so you can just go to one document and, you know, like, that's a, just a recording thing after the fact. I don't know. And as far as, you know, putting all this, this sort of procedure, policy, whatever you wanna call it, guideline, best practice, I'm happy to write it up if you want.
I would really appreciate that. That'd be great, yeah. Do you think we could do that as a first read next time?
For Tuesday, this coming Tuesday?
No, not this Tuesday, because the, the agenda's already out and we have, because Monday's a holiday, we can't get it on there anyway.
Oh, yeah, for, for November, absolutely.
That would be great. Okay, because then we can discuss it and we'll hear other people's opinions as well. But I, I do think it's, it's a, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Jeff?
No.
Okay.
I'm stuck thinking about our policy.
I mean, it's only four years.
I have to tell you, I have never, I mean, in all my time being even a building administrator, we, we, and I even know from doing all the building operations, that you, you can't treat them any differently.
No, yeah.
Even before the equity thing, I mean.
Oh, you're a school choice? No, you can't take AP, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and I don't think that that's happening, yeah.
I, and you know what? Like, a lot of times when I go online, I see the MASC policy, so I never saw that line. I never, so that's.
Yeah, that was a really good catch. I'm glad you caught that, because that is.
I always look at, and the MASC one doesn't have it.
No.
Yeah, no, because it's probably illegal. I don't know who was on it in 2018 and came up with that, but I don't know.
It's wild. That wasn't your eye.
Was not me, no.
Wasn't you, Mike, that's all we know.
It was not me, Jeff. I would not let that.
We would never let that fly.
Shot down in a second.
Not gonna sneak that past me.
No.
Uh, one other item here.
Yes.
The new letter, newsletter from MASC, 21 budget policies.
Yep.
So I remember last year when we had a huge chunk of budget policies to look up, it was just flat out assigned to Bob and he gave his input on them, because he was most familiar with them.
Okay.
So maybe we get the budget subcommittee involved in this.
That's a good idea.
I mean, 21, you know, tackle a few of them.
That's what they're there for.
That's what they're there for. Do some work, guys.
Well, I mean, I can see even like DVD budget planning eliminates unnecessary word, like, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of them are probably just.
Yeah.
Easy, but.
Yeah, they look like it.
I think one of them said something about there was a change.
That would be good for them to take a look at those policies, since they're doing that one.
Absolutely, and then they'll be familiar with them as well. So I think it's win-win, no matter what. All right, that's great.
Some of them, I think it did refer to some changes at the state, but.
Now, so before we move, before we move to adjourn, is, are we, are there other policies? Like, I think I, are we up to date on policies? Should I go back and look at last year's just to double check what the updates were?
Up to date on?
Like reviewing policies?
I think we decided, or you decided as a committee, that what you would do is you would look at the MASC policies and the attorney policies as they come up.
Perfect.
Yep.
You know, and this is a good example, like, all of these ones with the hair texture and things like that.
Yep.
If you've been following it, there was a case like that with two young girls, I believe, who would not admit it into school because they had, you know, some dread.
Yep, yeah, and that, those weren't allowed.
I don't know who wouldn't.
Yeah, I agree.
In Massachusetts?
Someone had a policy.
Yeah, I believe it was in Massachusetts, and so.
Yeah.
When that stuff comes up, someone does something like that.
Yeah.
You know, that they shouldn't do, and now, then you see it reflected in.
Okay.
Remember I was saying, something will happen, someone will do something they shouldn't do.
Yeah, provides a review and an update.
You guys that?
Yeah.
And now you see it in all these policies. You wouldn't think you would need to have that, you know, like, you know.
Yeah.
But, there it is, so.
Yeah.
I think that's what your discussion was, that you would just, because sometimes they come out from, from Russ, that he has some.
Right.
And usually, they, they sort of mirror this anyway, but I think that's the easiest way, because other than that.